So first, why haven't we bought? It's not due to not putting in offers. In fact, we put over two hundred and forty offers this year and we've gotten some deals accepted. Early on, we had things accepted that we thought we were going to close on. We had a ten million dollar deal that we thought we were going to take down. We had a fourteen million dollar deal we thought we were going to take down. And as we were going through financing, something very interesting happened. Early in the year, interest rates moved again. Even though we had thought that last year, the interest rates were, were not going to move, they still moved early in the year. And they moved twice and it was a little bit of enough of a shakeup on a fourteen million dollar deal and a ten million dollar deal to kill the deals. Show fans, if you understand, that's a lot of money, right? Little, little percentages mean a lot on these, uh, these size deals. Another big factor, insurance has gone up on all, all portfolios, all across the country. But in Florida specifically, it has been absolutely obliterated. Show fans, if you're familiar with the Florida market and understand the insurance rates down here, oh, it's nuts. Absolutely. So it's had an impact. Uh, the other thing that has had a massive impact is, and we always say this, so it's not even worth mentioning, but taxes, insurance, maintenance, repairs, and just about everything related to fixing a building has gone up dramatically. Show fans, if you're noticing that, the things have gotten crazy. So those are factors that are affecting us on our, our purchases. Some of the other factors that people are not talking about, only real landlords and real estate investors actually know these problems. Evictions are not happening as fast as they used to happen. We used to be able to evict a person in two weeks to four months, uh, two weeks to four, uh, two weeks to two months. Now evictions are taking six months to eight months. So if fans have noticed that in your portfolio, longer evictions. And it's not like you can't serve them. We got the serving part down. It's just the court won't make time for us to connect. So we're having a little bit of a challenge and I want, before I go any further, I want to just remind each one of you, I am an alchemist. I'm about that abundance mindset when the opportunities, uh, when everybody sees challenges and scarcity and problems and competition, I see a way to make money. And today I will talk about where I see the way to make money, where I'm going. I just want to be very clear that we're very good at real estate investing and most of you are, you're really talented. In fact, most of you are millionaires or multimillionaires on this call. And some of you at least have been through a lot of our training and know exactly how this business works. So the fact that you're not closing on deals is not necessarily due to not taking a ton of action. I want to validate that by saying Grant Cardone's not closing on deals. Vinnie Chopra is not closing on deals. These are billionaires in the place, in the, in the space. Tim Bratt has reduced the amount of deals he closes on. Tim Bratt's, I think he has over a billion dollars as well. Most syndicators that I'm friends with have become net sellers as of two and three years ago. These are the guys who buy large complexes and sell them. I have friends in the Florida market who flip single family homes. I have friends who flipped single family homes in the Massachusetts market who have gotten their shirts handed to them in the last two years. Multiple deals that they had locked down or doing deals where the, the flips just didn't work. Show fans, if you've heard these stories as well, I'm not the only one telling this. Excellent. We've seen syndications who were really great operators go belly up. I have friends right now who are concerned that they can't make their commitments because they're doing refinances that they're just, there's no way the numbers work. And they can't find terms and loans and they're starting to get into really tight spots. But here's what they're doing and here's why the bubble continues to grow. They're doing more capital calls. They're going back to their investors and asking for the money to handle the difference of the money that it's now costing every single month. So fans, if you understand that, sounds like a Ponzi scheme. They're making a mistake because they made a mistake four years ago. They made a mistake five years ago. They're doing capital calls, coming back, asking for capital in a situation where they can't sell the property for what they owe on it. Or they can't sell the property for what they told their investors they would get on it and they can't pay the preferred returns. I know many investors who have signed up for deals and properties and opportunities, passive investors, who have been told they are not going to receive a paycheck. I were told that their returns are not coming in. Show fans have heard these stories as well. Yes. So it, one of the problems is that you feel like you're in a vacuum. You feel like you're in a bubble. You feel like, well, all the gurus are saying, go buy real estate. You gotta rely on real estate and even Grant Cardone is still, you know, he's ten Xing, buy real estate, go out there and do this. And there's, there's very few, you've got Pace Morbi, right? You've got literally, show of fans, if you know, a bunch of gurus who are saying buy real estate. It's the only way to get wealthy, right? Okay, there's a lot of them out there. Even though that is their message, because that's how they built their fame. The truth is they're not buying. They're not taking action. They're not growing. They're not doing the things that they're telling you to do. And a lot of, a lot of the situation that I think is happening inside, not just your heads, but in the heads of everybody in the real estate space, is they're getting these contradicting feelings. I want to make sure that our community, our top investors, the people who we have the biggest relationships with are very clear. You're not alone in this knowledge. And these are not people you don't distrust. Show fans, the information you're getting is people you do trust. Yeah. And the first instinct you may have is, oh, well, this person is just not a good investor, right? This person, oh, they just, you know, they got, they fell into, um, they're getting lazy or they fell into complacency. Or maybe they're not marketing hard enough or not doing the things that they used to do to make them successful. The truth is, the market has shifted. And we're at a point called euphoria. We've all seen the market cycle. I do this call often, uh, this other call, uh, called work with investors or millionaire magnets. Show fans, if you've been on that call before, where I show you the market cycle. I will do it for those of you who have not been on that call. Let me share really quick on the screen. And let me know if you see it in three, two, and one. This is where market prices are right now, and I'm going to show you where I think they're going. And the reason I know this is because as Mitch Jorski has always said to me, the trend is your friend. So the trend is your friend. And if it goes in a certain direction, it'll probably continue to go in that direction for some time until it makes a change. Who here notices that little curve at the top there? We see that little, little shift. Now I talked about the market cycle. This is the market cycle. You're all familiar with it. You're all very intelligent. So where do you think we are? Drop it in the chat. This is just for fun. Where do you think we are in the market cycle? Unfortunately, this is not a call with a bunch of newbies. So this is, this is Alchemist Nation. We all know where we're at. Uh, drop it in the chat. Where do you think we are? And if, if you're wrong, by the way, I love you anyway. Uh, let's, let's just be honest with where we think we are. Fill up the chat. Where do you think we are? All right. And, uh, depends on the market does not explain the US market, Frank. You can't get out of this one. US market, but yes, all markets have ups and downs. Absolutely. There are opportunities everywhere. But we're talking about the United States market as a, as a whole. So we've got, uh, euphoria between euphoria, denial, depend, uh, euphoria, denial, very, very good. Keep dropping. Anybody who hasn't, uh, dropped an opinion, keep going. Excellent. Now, like I said, there is no right or wrong. But I do have my opinion and I'm allowed to look at charts and then look at this and make a decision. So first, let's go back to the chart. And we'll take a quick look at it. Everybody can take a quick look at it. If you want to change your answer, you absolutely can. And then we're going to go back to the market cycle. This is where I think we actually are. Even though, even though the news and the media will tell you we're walking in fear, panic or depression. Even though it feels like, well, I mean, the thing's got to bottom out sometime. Like remember two thousand eight? Like who here still thinks, well, remember two thousand eight? The market must crash. It has to crash, right? We're all thinking this past because the most recent big trauma we've all experienced, the entire country, the entire world faced the trauma of the United States market crash, uh, real estate market crash. But the truth is, if you look at the charts, we're here. And if you look at how long this chart took to go from the bottom to the top, by the way, no, who here did not feel like twenty twenty was the bottom? Show fans, if you did not feel like twenty twenty was the bottom. Nobody did. Nobody felt like it. But when you look at the chart, it's very clear. We had a drop. It was a very small drop, a very small correction back in two thousand eighteen. Ron and I were very, very sincerely aware of this drop because we were selling real estate during this time. And all of our real estate flips froze on us. Nothing sold. We couldn't move, but it wasn't a very long drop. Our market came back very quickly because as you know, some markets are better than others. And we've been selling since about two thousand twenty, a large amount of our portfolio. This right here, this little top is euphoria. And it took two years to go from this optimism to euphoria. It took two years for us to get from one space to the next space. So fans, if you can understand that it may take two years to get that far to denial. It may take two years just to get to denial. It may take another two years before we get down to fear and panic. And it may take another two years before we get down to depression. Let that settle in for a little bit. If the real estate prices are not dropping, but all of the signs are not making it easy for us to buy. Doesn't that put into your mind a little bit of concern around what actually should be happening right now? Show of fans, if you're feeling that concern, keeps you up at night, right? I don't know about you. It keeps me up at night because up until the last four years, I would say real estate was my main squeeze. It was my primary objective. It was all I did. In fact, I was so crazy, so ambivalent on real estate that I went and I said, I'm the real estate mentor. I went and said, that's my whole career. That's everything that I do. And over these last, I'll, I'll say this last year, I really had to come to terms with myself and say, I don't feel ethical telling people to just buy real estate. It doesn't feel right. It does feel correct to say, keep putting offers in. That to me feels right. The, the core, my soul says, keep putting offers in, keep aiming for properties that will work. Keep doing what we do as real estate investors during a market euphoria during the top, we keep submitting offers. Show fans, if you agree that you've heard that for before, from the tops, from the, the top guys who've made it before, who's done all this before. My mentor says the same thing. But something that isn't as loud, something that isn't heard often is that every single operator, every single highly successful real estate investor has an operational company, has a business that brings in money when the real estate company doesn't bring in money. I started learning this in two thousand fifteen when I started interviewing millionaires. Every single one of them has an operational company. Whether it's their flips or their real estate brokerage, or their lending company, or their construction company, or their property management company, or their electrical company, or their plumbing company, or their garbage removal company. Show fans, if you've heard all of this as well, maybe didn't write down that little nugget that they had an operational company, but you did know that there was something else that they did. Show fans, again, if you, you know this, but every single millionaire, multimillionaire, big guy you can think of, they have some operational company that is running at all times. And one of the things we started doing in Alchemist Nation about four years ago is we started saying, look, if you want to become a millionaire, that was our focus, build a hundred millionaires. If you want to become successful, real estate, yes, acquire real estate. And for a time, it really worked for us very, very well. But we also started shifting and saying, but build a business. But really focus on your income, focus on learning sales, focus on learning marketing, focus on management and business acumen. And this year, we're starting to get to the point where we're saying, damn, like that may become more and more important than it has ever been in the entire history of us building wealth is two things. One, build a business. And two, build a business that drives a network. You need a network that owns real estate or has access to real estate. Because again, we were real estate investors first, who just happened to be in a market where real estate is not as easy as it used to be. So if we expand our network, and I'm going to go back to the secret of like Ron and I's success and South Coast Capital and Alchemist Nations are our core of where we came from. So that, by the way, who here learns from beginners, like learns from how a person built the thing? It's helpful to know where it all came from, right? So going back to where we started, Ron and I have, in two thousand eighteen, when, when the market started shaking on us, he and I both got our big boy pants on and we became real estate agents again. We shifted back to where we, where we originally had most of our strength and we couldn't sell our flips. When our properties weren't flipping, when they weren't making money, we shifted back and we said, okay, we're going to do real estate agency again. And we did two things. We started another business. We started something called Agent Alchemist, where we were going to use that business to recruit agents to our agency. And one of the challenges we ran into was that agents also needed training. And so Agent Alchemist became a training company. That wasn't just a brokerage anymore. It was a training company that we wanted to non-compete with everybody else. We didn't want to compete with the other brokers. We just wanted agents who wanted to work with investors coming over to us. And we started teaching and teaching and training. And eventually we had too many people coming to us for training that weren't signing up for our brokerage. So we started charging for the training. And interestingly enough, that charging actually became a business. We actually had a, a little different stream that grew out of us doing massive energy, massive momentum, massive pushing into the universe. A stream came out of nowhere. Who's seen this in their life? You go out and you do a lot of good for people and suddenly a stream of income comes in. So that was, that was how Alchemist Nation itself formed. It was coming from a place of how do we teach agents how to work with investors? And you'll notice a lot of what we're doing right now is bringing that back. We're bringing back our supporting agents because Ron and I both carry our license and so does Dorina. And in fact, many of you in this community carry a license. Show fans, if you're a licensed agent, even if you don't use it all the time, many of us are licensed. So my heart comes from a place of a guy who couldn't, who couldn't figure out money and was going through a divorce and basically lost. I had twenty five thousand saved and the next day I had negative twenty five thousand. I had to go and borrow twenty five thousand to survive. And get through and keep my properties that I had. And I didn't have, I no longer had the option to buy real estate. I had to take a whole year off. And I went and I started building my skill as a salesperson. I went from making seventy five thousand dollars a year as an employee for Johnson and Johnson to making seventeen thousand a year as a self-employed entrepreneur, as a real estate agent. And in that year, I realized two things. One, it's the worst year of my fucking life. I never want to do that again. It was two thousand fifteen. I realized the second thing, when I figure this game out, I will teach as many people as possible so that nobody has to feel the pain, suffering and challenge that I faced during two thousand and fifteen. So if fans, you've been down to the bottom and you will never go back. Absolutely. It installs something inside of you, installs some sort of program, a fail safe. When, when you get to a dangerous spot, you flick the machine on, right? The, the machine comes in and just protects you and you start doing things. We call it the true self. Napoleon Hill called it his true self. When he got to such a point, uh, this is, uh, from the book Outwitting the Devil. Show fans, if you've read that book. Uh, if you haven't listened to an audible fantastic book, if you are not making money, you should be making money. It's because you're in something called drifting. Uh, you're just drifting through life and just kind of, uh, in a biased, unbiased space in a rut. And then when you find your true self, your true self comes out and really explodes. And just takes right action, constantly doing the right thing, the right thing, the right thing, all the stuff the gurus talk about, right? That right action only comes from a place of, I must, I need to, my, that place of, I know if I do enough, something will happen. And the reason I share that is this is that time for a lot of realtors out there. This is that time for a lot of mortgage brokers. This is that time for a lot of financial planners. It's that time for property managers who are getting concerned. The first thing a real estate investor does when their money gets tight is they cut their property management. They cut their contractors. They get cheaper work. They get cheaper utilities. They get cheaper everything. They get cheaper insurance. So insurance brokers are having a challenge right now and these challenges will continue. One of the other things that a person does, they cut their marketing as soon as, as soon as times get tough in the market, they cut their marketing spend. They don't spend money on marketing anymore. Show of fans, if you know this to be true, even some of us have made that mistake. Absolutely. We start evaluating everything in our lives. We start looking for the pains and the problems, the things that aren't giving us the results that we're looking for. And so we make a shift because that's what the human body is designed to do. Actually, it's not just the body. It's the subconscious mind. It's this beautiful intelligence. There's a lot of talk around artificial intelligence, but what you've got right here is something that's running at all times. Natural intelligence, this natural ability to, when a painful thing happens, instinctually you go and solve problems. Unfortunately, some of the instincts are not correct. Show fans, if you've noticed that already, some of the instincts that are running. It's like, ah, like it's very counterintuitive how to get it to do things oper- uh, operationally properly. So in Alchemist Nation, Ron and I were sitting down and we said, how do we make a community of people who are immune to market crashes? How do we make the community that is immune to changes? Later on, that phrase became recession proof. How do we make a community that is recession proof? How do we make realtors and business owners, investors recession proof when times start coming after them? One of the challenges we face is, uh, we tend to go all in on a single thing because that is the key to success. But if you go all in on the wrong thing at the wrong time, so fans, if you understand, that's how you sink a boat really quick. I want to go into iceberg at that angle with all your force because that will sink even the greatest unsinkable boats. But if you guide yourself in the right avenue, you can get your, yourself, your crew to, to shore safely. So Alchemist Station's made some pivots. I'm going to talk about some fantastical stuff tonight. I will talk about twenty years out into the future. I'll talk about, uh, being on the moon. I'm going to share some of the cool things that I'd like to do. The little kid in me wants to be involved with. And I'm also going to share some of the very tactical things that we're doing right now that are making money for us two day in this market. So fans, if you have interest in both, the kid in you is like, yeah, tell me about the moon, but the adult in you is like, let's figure out the money thing today. All right. I'm not interested in what we're doing twenty years from now. I got a family. I got kids and I got sleep that I finally have to have. This call is designed to make sure that you can sleep tonight. So fans, it'd be nice to finally get a good night's sleep, knowing you've got a path. I feel the same way. So let's, uh, let's dive in. I'm going to open this PowerPoint that I haven't opened yet, but it was in Canva. If I have to do it in Canva, I will do that for you as well. Uh, drop in the chat, by the way, if you feel like you're in the right room right now. Drop in the chat. If you know you're in the right place, this is where you belong at this very moment. Excellent. Drop it down in the chat. The word is yes. If you feel like you're in the right place with the right people, drop that in the chat. And so, by the way, the fear mongering is over. I'm not going to tell you anymore about the bad things that are happening in the world. Is that okay? I have permission to move towards something positive. Excellent. I love and appreciate each one of you, uh, but I do have to be realistic, right? I'm a very positive person. I love positivity. I love pointing out and punching everybody in the face with like how great the day is going to be and what you're capable of as a human being. But sometimes it does take setting our ground, our feet in the ground, in a firm place where we could say, maybe he's right about my inner ability to destroy the world and do the best things possible for my family and my friends. But at this moment, the world is on fire. And I'm going to be very clear, there are a lot of good things in the world. I'll be very clear that there are some really beautiful, amazing things that are happening in the world right now, and many of you are actually a part of it. So Alchemist Nation, our core belief, our core goal is to automate. And it's not just the millionaire building process. It is automating the wealth building process. Or as we, we call it behind the scenes, automating financial freedom. The reason we don't say financial freedom is because everybody else says it and it doesn't work for SEO. Show of fans, if you understand what I'm talking about, it's boring. So we don't, we don't say finance freedom. We say it's automating the millionaire building process, which is super freaking cool. So we have a primary objective that keeps us going and that is that, um, that we're going to make a lot of people really rich. That is, that is over time, that is our primary goal is to make people actually make money, not even important. But in the first year, show fans, you ready for the tactical, what we're doing right now? Excellent. So the first year, we're going to focus on community integration by hosting monthly events in all three hundred major cities across the country. This is our main job. Our main strategy is to increase network. It is not just for us, but I will tell you very selfishly, I plan on buying a billion dollars worth of real estate. When I say a billion dollars, I mean, my equity position would be a billion dollars. Show fans, if you don't mind, an equity position that's bigger than most people think. One of the reasons I can get away with this is I'm only thirty seven and I have each and every one of you. And I have the ability to duplicate you, your ability, your skill, your knowledge, simply through the internet. So fans, if you've seen that to be a very powerful tool already. Excellent. So year one is build our network. Year five, we're skipping five years. This is where it gets a little fantastic. Year five, I intend to build a five billion dollar portfolio by acquiring real estate with three hundred leaders. One in each city, that's seventeen million dollars worth of real estate per city in three hundred of the major cities across the country. The only cities we invest in are a city with a population of over a hundred thousand people. Because any city smaller than that, inventory challenges become an issue when you try to sell stuff. It's harder to get out liquidity is a problem and also inventory just doesn't exist. So it's harder to get in. So what we're going to be doing is focusing over the next five years, everything we do, you see us doing is to acquire real estate in three hundred cities. I'm going to show you. Yep. I'm going to show you why we're doing it this way, but I could do it much faster. Let me just be clear that I can do it a much faster way than the path we're taking. Uh, year ten is to establish, here's where it gets magical. Year ten is to establish a super cool city in the desert. Year five fifteen is to, uh, be the company hiring, uh, building housing on the moon. And year fifteen is, uh, complete financial freedom for the entire world. So we have no idea how that's possible. That's why it's in year twenty. Show fans, if you understand, we put the crazier things further out. And those crazier things are only if you and I are still kicking it twenty years from now. Some of you may just retire on a million dollars, two million dollars, whatever. I'm not going to judge you. Love you just the way you are. Uh, one of the things Doug taught me a long time ago is I love you for who you are and who you are not. And Dorina, Ron, uh, if you guys can just keep an eye on the folks in the waiting room. So this is year one. This is our plan is to go and build three hundred live events as of not today, I believe. I think it's going to be as of Tuesday or Wednesday. You will see on Alchemist Station, when you go there, all three hundred events do currently exist across the country. One of the challenges we face is that only thirty of them, or I think it's only forty of them have hosts and volunteers. The other two hundred and sixty are these strange networking events that just have people showing up. Nobody knows the context. Nobody knows why they're there. They just know that it was a business for real estate professionals network and they're getting together and they're kind of hanging out. And they come back again next month, but there's no leader, no direction. Show fans, if you understand, it's the beginning. It's kind of like life on earth when it first started, just whatever we hear, we made it, you know, radiation, whatever, whatever got us here. God said, uh, let there be light and there was light. So so our goal is to make sure that these now have hosts. They have sponsors. They have people who can build these teams. We've hired a sales team and we're going to continue hiring a sales team so that we can profit from these events. Uh, Jimmy, yeah, Jimmy is one of our, our salespeople. It's helped people get into sponsorships. Let's give Jimmy and all the sales team a round of applause. We actually call them team builders. Uh, cause every company has a secret code word for their sales team. Ours are team builders. These are the millionaire makers. These are the guys who are out there helping us build the process. So these events, they're powering the actual team building for us to buy real estate. Show fans, if you understand, your network is your net worth. We're building the most powerful, tight network across the country. So you can invest in any city without ever having to fly out there because you've got somebody who's running the team, somebody who commits to do things morally, ethically and legally. Yes, I will be a part of buying real estate with the community, but also you can buy real estate without me. Using the same network and leverage that we're creating all across the country. Who would love to just fly into a city and go to an Alchemist Station event that you know for sure is going to be full of people like you? Me too. I kind of, like I said, a lot of what we do is also a little bit part of what I want as well. So the second step is diversified real estate portfolio. I told you there was an easy way and a hard way. Uh, well, there's an easy way and a fulfilling way. Here's the easy way. The easy way is simple. Uh, my fast option, you go to a hedge fund to collect the capital and you go to a property management company. It's a national property management company and they give you all the deals and then they manage all the deals. Show of fans, if you could do the math, it's very simple. It's two conversations. Now, obviously I could spend the next two years finding those two conversations. I could spend the next year, two years, three years, looking for the hedge funds, building those relationships, getting them all on my podcast, same with the property managers. I could go get the top national property managers of my podcast, build deep relationships and then just go buy a whole, a whole bunch of real estate with them. That would be if the money was important to me. Unfortunately, I'm one of those weird people who cares more about the people I'm around and cares more about doing something with a tribe and a movement than just making money. Show of fans, if you're committed to building a hundred millionaires as well. I know, I know. So it means I got to bring them along. I've got to bring and make room for my community. So I've got a plan. These live events start with the business real estate professionals. This is where we attract the team. This is where we attract the realtors, the coaches, the, uh, landlords, the people who will be mentors, the people who are financial planners. They're, uh, they're capable of property management. So they have the property managers in there. There's credit repair specialists. There's, uh, people who do cost segregation, the, uh, financial, was it financial attorneys? There's three types of attorneys, the people who do closings, the people who do, uh, instruments for fire, uh, for retirement. Then we have our landlord associations. Now, before you say, well, why would we do landlord associations for pulling all those business real estate professionals? Uh, show fans, landlords own all the real estate we want to own, if you figured that out. So instead of us being like, hey, you want to sell your house to us, sell your house to us, sell your house to us. We're going to bring the landlord association across the country and make it the greatest, tightest, best landlord association powered by the sponsors we collected in our business real estate professionals networks. Taking only the most abundant mindset, taking only the most caring, empathic people who really want to help others into the community and giving them the opportunity to serve our landlords. Show fans, if you understand the process now. These are recruiting tools. These business real estate professionals networks, these are an opportunity for us to recruit. Now, obviously the coaches that we put in, the sponsors, the marketing people we put on the sponsors, they're going to help us build these communities and find the right people to run these landlord associations. Then finally, it does take capital to do these deals. So the multifamily network, we're going to continue to expand that across the country. And with that capital, we're going to take all of those investors, bring them into Alchemist Nation and invest with them along with the existing landlords and new landlords and our partners. We're going to buy real estate across the country. Show fans, if you understand, it's simple, but not simple. It's simple. It's not easy. The concept makes sense, but it takes a lot of logistics. And so we're taking on a lot of partners to make sure that this works. The utopian city, I'm just going to blast through these because this is pie in the sky stuff and I want to hang out in reality. I want to show you how we're making money. Is that okay? If I just blast through these, because these are just freaking fun and I'm a kid at, at heart. Uh, utopian city might look like that, probably not, could look like that. Who knows? Could look like this. But it's a cool idea. The idea is that we want to build something that people want to move to. And later on, I'll talk about like, why that's so cool. Uh, the third thing in our list or the fourth thing in our list is housing on the moon. Again, Elon already took go to Mars. What are we going to do? He took Tesla. He took, you know, electric cars. He took solar city. He took boring company. He's done all the stuff for us, but he hasn't built the housing yet. So I feel like there's an opportunity. And by the way, if two thousand and forty comes and that opportunity is wiped out. Show of fans, if you know, I'll pivot. We'll just do whatever makes money at that time. Like who cares? Like we'll just shift. But that's the cool thing to me. I'd like to be able to be a part of that. And then, uh, population migration, moving to the city. So this is actually probably not in the right order, but once the city exists, people are going to want to move to it and we're going to end up seeing the coasts and the other places that the city is not located in. That those real estate prices coming down, we're probably going to see a shift of values of real estate because we don't plan on just building like a little city of a Of values of real estate because we don't plan on just building like a little city of a hundred thousand population. The goal is to put. More people in that city than currently exist in the United States, which means. This is a huge pie in the sky idea. It means we're doing something absolutely ridiculous, absolutely fantastic. And if it works, it only works, by the way, if there's demand and if there's need. Show fans, if you understand, demand and need. If there's not, we probably will have to stop. But in order to drive the prices down on real estate, you must increase the inventory, which means we're going to go back to something we talked about four years ago. Which is three D printing houses and the technology has advanced. But it's still not where we want it, so we're going to let those guys keep doing what they're doing and improving. While we're building our network. Show fans, if you understand, we're building our network while everybody else is doing and bringing the technology to market for us. Absolutely. So this is kind of an overview. This year, it's events. Next year, it's still events. The year after, it's still events. We're going to keep running and improving our events. And making our business real estate professionals very, very wealthy. By helping them transfer real estate. Instead of people just buying real estate, we're going to help them. Sell their real estate, just like Ron and I have been doing for the last three years. We've been selling real estate every single year. In fact, we have the biggest tax gain that we've ever had on our, on our docket. Uh so. Show fans, if that was fun, that's a very interesting prospectus of the future. This makes a lot of money. Uh those of you who know me know I like to make money. Uh those of you who don't know me, uh let me be very clear. I do nothing without making money, because if I do something, I'm probably going to do it again. My dad told me something very important as a kid. My dad said, son. When it comes to doing things, because I asked that, I was like, how do I know what's right, Dad? How do I know what to do? How do I know if this is the right thing or the wrong thing to do? And you know, if it's, if it's going to be good for me. And my dad said something that has always been a rule for me. He said, well. If it's something you wouldn't want to do twice, don't do it once. If it's something you wouldn't want to do every single day for the rest of your life, don't start it. If it's something that leads to a bad situation in your life. If you do it too many times, don't ever start it. So fans, if that's a, a pretty easy principle. It's simple, not easy. It's a simple concept, but. Engaging in it is, we, we can find it tricky sometimes. And one of those things is don't do activities that don't pay you. If the activity cannot, will not eventually pay you, don't do the activity at all. Now, I'm not saying you have to get paid immediately, but you do have to see a way to get paid from the activity itself. One of the things that has always paid, no matter what you do. Is be a decent human being. Treat people with respect and give them something. Always seek to end a conversation with a gift, with some giving. So fans, if this call you've already received, giving from the start of the call, you got some sort of value from me. I gave information, I gave context, I gave connections. So that is always my goal and it's a solid principle that has really taken me far. One of the things that will never give you, one of the things that will never benefit your life is uh. Speaking negatively about other people. It's a dangerous activity. It never pans out. It may be in the short term feels like it does, so does sugar, but you know what too much sugar does? Diabetes, rotten teeth and then eventually death. And I've lost family to that too. Show fans, if you lost somebody to diabetes. I, I lost my grandmother to pancreatic cancer with a compliment, complication of diabetes. So I learned. Sugar is a bad thing. Society will give you drugs. And call them awesome, call them nice, make them legal. They'll give them to little kids. And they'll make it seem like it's a good idea to keep feeding your kids the stuff with the cartoons on it. But show fans, if you know, deep down inside, you're creating an addiction that they can't shake for the rest of their lives. That causes problems. Well, one of those things that they did early on in, in your life also was money. Money is one of those addictions. Money, one of those things that once you get the hang of it. You're like, I'd rather do money than anything else. But one of the, one of the powerful assets that you have as an alchemist is the ability to transmute relationships into. Value into something that you're looking for, whether it's money or it's time. Or it's a sense of joy or peace or health. You can transfer money units. Or you could transfer relational units. Show fans, if you've seen that, there's a family discount on everything. Yeah, weird. What's that from? Relationships. Relationships give you some sort of benefits. And you can get those benefits. You can transfer those benefits onto others. Who's here has done a favor because of a friend of a friend, friend of a family member, done favors for all of them. Don't even know them from a hole in the wall, but it's like, wow, you're a friend of my cousin. Like I got you. So it is transferable. It is a tangible thing, even if it can't be seen. I'm going to show you where we're making a lot of our money right now in Alchemist Nation. We're doing something called Alchemist Connect. Who's heard of that? Excellent. So Alchemist Connect has two profit centers. The first was. Connector Plan and the second was the Trusted Team. Who here has heard of the Trusted Team? Yes, very smart. We've seen it. You can see last month's revenue was ten thousand dollars. And if you look on the right here, you can actually see that the revenue has continued to go up. In fact, this looks a lot like a lot of investor packages where they're like. Uh well, it's got to look like this. They have no money, made no money, never, never any proof of funds, but they go hockey stick anyway. They're like, it's gotta be like. To, 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 to the hockey stick, right? Here's what the hockey stick was. We discovered the trusted team. We discovered that if we charged an extra hundred dollars and delivered an extra ten X return on investment by creating an event for a person. Instead of just saying, hey, here's a CRM, good luck. We said, we'll build the event for you. We're going to market the event for you. We're going to drive traffic in and we're going to find other people who've paid. For billing your event for you. We're going to build a community around you. We're selling community. On the backend, we're getting paid as a technology company. Show fans, if you understand. Even though we look like an event company, even though we look and we act and operate like a community. We look and act like it, real estate investors, what we truly are is a technology company. That has latched onto a smarter technology company. We've white labeled this program. And what we've done is we've said, instead of just using this software, like the basic version that was, that only makes up twenty percent of our income. We're going to go create something so valuable that a real estate professional, that a business owner, that a, a real estate investor themselves can't do without it. By the way, who here would love to have a landlord association with a hundred landlords in your city who would be interested in selling their property to you when the market turns? Maybe seller financing their money to, their property to you? No kidding. Me too. Exactly. So what we're doing is we're building a network of this and we are the technology on the backend. It's beautiful. We also still have our training company. That's completely separate. And the training company last year, I think it brought in around three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This year is probably on track to bring close to seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. And the reason it makes money is it's not the full product. The training company is not everything we do. It's just a piece. So that people can do this better. They work with the technology better. I, by the way, I love that. Uh let's give Ron and Mark and the sales team, the, the team builder's big round of applause for making sure that hockey stick exists. I do love, I do love when something makes money. Uh we have a new program coming out and this is not just for you. This is for friends and family members. This is for people who have. A desire to earn money, but they don't quite know how to do it. And it's called the Alchemist Advantage. And the Alchemist Advantage pays twelve percent interest. It is not backed by real estate. It is not backed by anything. It is simply backed by the concept. That we know what we're doing when it comes to money and that we're going to continue to pay this because. I don't have a real estate deal to invest in right now. Instead, I have a company that costs me nothing to operate and brings in somewhere close to eighteen to thirty thousand dollars a month. And gradually keeps going up every single month. Show fans, if you love subscription services. Me too. And for those of you who are already thinking, man, I gotta buy into this. I've got to get equity. Not yet. It is still too small and it's still too exciting for us to allow investors in. So this is just a. Loan lend opportunity and it is only for family, friends who are sitting on fifty, a hundred thousand dollars. If you don't have it, don't worry. I know. Right? I've, I've read the reports. I know where you're at financially. I love you and I want to see you do very well. Alchemist Advantage is just for those who are looking for that really simple return. I recently had. A couple of Ponzi schemes blow up in my face. Fortunately, I wasn't exposed to the big one. But a lot of my friends were. In fact, Alchemist Nation as a total lost about five million dollars this year. Just now, when I say Alchemist Station, I don't mean me. I don't mean my company. I don't mean anything I'm actually connected to. What I do mean is that my community lost five million dollars. Show fans, if you understand, it's painful for me, even though it's not my money. It was painful to watch and. One of those, I, I. One of the, okay, the guy who runs it, I'm not going to call it a Ponzi scheme, but it feels like a Ponzi scheme. And it looks like a Ponzi scheme and it smells like a Ponzi scheme. So show fans, if you understand what I think it might be. Yeah, all right. So I'm not going to call it that, but. A lot of these out there are offering five percent per month. Or if you do the math, that's of over forty percent per year, sixty five percent per year. Some of them, some of them are offering a hundred percent. Return on investment per year. Anything that is over twelve percent in my mind. That isn't including taxes, like internal rate of return can be a twenty, thirty percent, absolutely. But actual handing you checks, uh this, this one that, this is what I'm in right now, that has not blown up and Mitch Jorski told me about it and do not go texting Mitch about it, but. Uh there's one I'm in right now that pays twenty five percent per month. And I put very small money in it because I expect it to blow up. Show fans, if you understand Ponzi schemes eventually blow up. That's what they do. So this is, this is based on a twelve percent return, one percent per month. So long, as long as our revenue continues to grow at even just a small, basic bare minimum, we're going to be able to support while we're paying your family members and your friends. And for those of you who do have liquid cash. So another one that blew up was um. Financial trading company. It was a Forex trading company that uh it didn't quite blow up. We still have, I think, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out there. Ron and I actually personally invested. That it looks like might come back, but for the last, I don't know how many, three, four or five months, it hasn't given us anything. Which is pretty terrifying and the, the trading company just shut down and disappeared. So fans, if you understand, there's a lot of risky options out there. There's a lot. There's a lot of risky stuff. So I want to, I want to address what you should do right now. If that's okay. Do I have permission to talk about action steps, things that you can take action on? So putting Alchemist Advantage aside and your family aside, you have a choice. It's not going to be easy this year if you don't have a business running, if you don't have some sort of side stream of income. But I'm going to ask that if you have a job, hold on to your job, do what you're doing, hang in there, stay in the muck of it. Until you've created a stream of income. I'm going to ask you to consider entrepreneurship. I'm going to ask you to consider really going hard. If you're a salesperson, I'm going to say you're sharpening your skills as a salesperson. That's what I did in two thousand and fifteen. That's why I went from seventeen thousand. To making a hundred and uh fifteen thousand, ninety thousand from sales, twenty thousand, twenty five thousand for my rental properties. That's why in the next year I went to three hundred thousand income and the year after I went to a half a million and then a million and then one point five million. It was because I'd learned sales skills and obviously real estate investing helped a lot. But with real estate investing put on the sidelines, the other strategy that we have is build a business. And if you don't know how to evaluate a business, I'm going to share that really quickly. Who here knows restaurants are evaluated at two point five, two point seven five of their income? So if a restaurant pulls in a hundred thousand dollars, its valuation is two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. A tax specialist uh or a real estate agent, their business is valued at one point five. So if you pull in a hundred thousand dollars, your business is valued at one point, uh one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A business that has infrastructure, like a landscaping business that has infrastructure and clientele. That business can be valued closer to anywhere between that three to five, uh five times. So if you're. The, bringing in a hundred thousand dollars of business every single year, your business could be valued at somewhere between three hundred thousand and five hundred thousand. Here's what's interesting. If you're a technology company. And you have subscription services that work, that save people money. By the way, one of the things about Alchemist Connect. Is it saves about eight hundred dollars a month in services. You don't have to have active campaign. You don't need click funnels. You don't need a dozen other services that Alchemist Connect has plugged in. And we sell it at a very affordable rate and it builds a whole community for you and a whole marketing service. So fans, if you understand, the deal is amazing. It's just an absolute crazy service. It's built to be recession proof. It's built to be what a person can't get rid of when they're cutting all of their other marketing expenses and their business expenses. It's the one thing you can't cut because it's the one thing that runs your community. And the community is the only thing bringing you money. Even when Ron and I have had like no idea what to make money off of, we just go back to the community and say, hey, what do you guys want? And then we sell something. We provide a service, we provide an event, we do something, whatever the community is looking for, we go and we do real estate deals, do transactions. Make connections and that's where our income streams come in times of softness within our lives. So fans, if you could also use a community around you to protect yourself and isolate yourself, we all could. It's a secret to society. It's a secret to tribe. It's a secret that keeps us developing. So what we've done in, in times of darkness, what I'm going to suggest each one of you do is build on technology. And you don't have to go out and create your own technology platform because, oh, I didn't tell you. Let me tell you what technology is based on. Technology's uh multiplier, its value multiplier is ten to fifteen times. So if the company brings in a hundred thousand dollars a year, you're talking about a million to one point five million dollar valuation. And the reason being is if they can subscribe to one thing. All I have to do is go and add to that subscription service an extra dollar. And I've made X amount of money per every single subscription that that company already has in place. So fans, if that makes sense. If they're subscribing to one thing, you can upsell them the next thing. And we've actually shown, proven it in Alchemist Connect, ninety seven dollar sale product. One ninety seven. Next version being four ninety seven and it's not a big jump. It's not a big leap if your company and business is at that level. So how does this tie into you? You should be thinking about uh building things that pay residual income that you also own. And I, this is not a pitch, by the way, but this is something that you have as an option is to start selling. Services for other people. If you don't have the product, you don't have something built, then affiliate marketing or, by the way, there's five things that are going to be strong over the next five years that AI can't take away. Let me lead into this. The first is sales. AI can't replace, replace salespeople. It's really, really hard. They can't replace per, in-person salespeople right now. The future possibly, but here's the deal, AI has already replaced artists. Let me say that again. AI has replaced what people thought was the most difficult, impossible thing to replace. Turns out creativity, replaceable. It turns out that sales, human connection, that seems to be the sticking point that AI has. It's big challenge. So sales is one of the things that we believe will be absolutely safe in the future. The second one is marketing. Marketing because you know what? There's money attached to it and people are afraid to give that to an AI. Absolutely terrifying and it changes so often and mistakes can happen and it's very creative because people change. The third one is education. As much as we rely on AI for education on a basic level. People don't seem to trust AI when it comes to complex decision-making, hiring, training people at uh. Imagine training an AI to do your property management. You'd still be like looking over your shoulder every day like. Did it go and get the plumber there? Did it get me an expensive plumber or not? Show fans, you know what I'm talking about? The business. Business acumen. Uh I'm sorry. I just gave you away. So education and then business acumen is the next one. Business decisions, the ability to build a business. AI has not proven the ability to do that. Humans have the ability to do that. So building and managing businesses, flipping businesses or real estate, AI will not do real estate. And but real estate is just a business. I just put all under the same umbrella. And the fifth one is affiliate marketing. And the reason affiliate marketing is separate is because it's kind of a combination of sales and marketing. It has this space in between. But it doesn't mean you have to create the product. It's a in-betwixt space. And it's where Ron and I have been the last four years. We actually don't provide coaching. We have other coaches that provide the coaching. Who's noticed that? Show fans, if you notice, the other coaches do the work. So we're actually selling their product. Under our umbrella, under our brand. Same with Alchemist Connect. We didn't build the platform. We simply sell the platform and we customize it so it was better built for Alchemist Nation. We believe in affiliate marketing. So one of the things that we're. Employing or putting out there is we're building a sales team right now. That has the ability to sell sponsorships, Alchemist Connect. And what will be coming, what will be releasing soon will be the six-figure jumpstart. It'll be a three thousand dollar program. That is managed by coaches that are not me, but that are doing roadmaps. For the community that are running people through the roadmap calls, just like I used to do. And we're putting them in through the jumpstart and we're running this through for the whole entire year as a mastermind. Show fans, if that's a really cool training program that even you are like, man, I would like to check that out myself. Yeah. So the idea is you want to build things that even you want. And it's one of those things that even I would jump into. It's evergreen. So even as a multi-multi-millionaire with multiple companies, I still am like, dude, that program is exactly what I would still jump into. Because it's how to get the next six figures, not just get six figures. It's get the next, stack the next. Six figures could be in a year, six figures could be in a week, could be in a month. What, what is your goal? And that's the way this program is built. So that is uh coming out. And for you. Each one of you, if you have a real estate license, man, go deep in it. Here's the structure for real estate professionals, all real estate professionals, lenders, attorneys, anybody in the space. Go deep in investors, landlords specifically. Which is one of the reasons you'll see the landlord associations are going to be our, our huge drive after the summit. We won't be releasing them until the summit. We're beta testing in Fall River. We're beta testing in um. Florida. I think there's one other place we're beta testing the landlord associations right now. They're doing very well. And so we're going to be releasing that at the summit because you got to bring a little, little tension. My suggestion is start really getting good with the message of how to talk to high net worth people who own real estate. And the conversation I want you to start having, is it okay if I share that conversation tonight? I'm going to, I'm going to go over it very quickly. Anybody who's on Be The Bank knows this conversation, but it's called the return on equity. We no longer talk about return on investment because they made their investments so long ago, right? I thought put no money into the real estate. It's an infinite return. Not a good conversation to have, but I have five million dollars locked up in real estate. And that five million dollars is only pulling me about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month and only about fifty thousand of that a month I get to keep. So I'm only keeping somewhere around six hundred thousand dollars. That's a, that's less than a ten percent return. Per year. So fans, if you understand. Excellent. Now that would have worked and that would have been the numbers, except. In most cases, the portfolio is. in most cases, the portfolio is pulling in about five to six percent per year. Once a portfolio is paid off or close to paid off, it only brings in about five to four to five, four to six percent return on equity. Now you can say this and they'll already know. They won't know for sure, but they'll start doing the math and they'll start looking either on the call with you or after you talk. And they'll start realizing, oh, my God, I'm only making four to six percent return on investment. Return, I'm sorry, return on equity, return on the five million that's sitting in my properties. And then it starts begging the question, what do I do? And it brings us back to the old strategy of the birth strategy. Who here is very familiar with Burr, right? The whole community. We all know Burr. Buy renovate, ref- rent, refinance, repeat. Unfortunately, with interest rates being so high, the burst strategy doesn't work. You no longer want to borrow against the portfolio because now the portfolio doesn't cash flow. If you borrow too much, like you can, you can borrow about a forty percent debt right now and it still can kind of make that uh it'll bring it up a little bit. Your return on equity will get it somewhere closer to six to eight percent, but it won't get packed to that, that really high uh cash on cash that you had early on in the portfolio. So this um, the alternative is you start selling. You sell real estate or you just deal with a four to six percent return. By the way, four to six percent return on five million dollars, still really good. Show fans, if you agree, it's still really good. But landlords who've got, let's say, only a hundred thousand dollars in their real estate. Four to six percent, not really good. That's four thousand, six thousand dollars a year that they're getting. If they sold that property and paid the capital gains, so they got, they only have eighty thousand to work with now, but they bought a new property that maybe cash flows percentage-wise about the same, but is now bigger. Those people can actually beat out other investors who are super frugal using cash of their own. Because the ten thirty-one exchange means that twenty percent they get to keep that. Now they can buy a hundred thousand dollars worth of real estate. Does that make sense? It saves them twenty percent, twenty-six percent in certain states, thirty, thirty-something percent in California. So the ten thirty-one exchange now makes sense for investors who have a ton of money tied up in small portfolios that they want to put into a larger portfolio. This return on equity is a conversation that you have to get good at. If you're interested, I'll probably do more of it. Would that be valuable if I create some content around this? Okay, so maybe over the next few uh weeks, I'll create some content around that. Andrew, hold me accountable. Uh, Dorina, make sure that I, I actually do what I say I'm going to do. So this is our return equity. It's my strong suggestion that you start encouraging sellers to sell. You can use people like me as an example. You can use Grant Cardone. You can use any major syndicator, any major real estate investor as an example. We've been selling for years. We're net sellers. That's what we're doing because it makes sense. The thing is, you don't want to end up in the market that crashes with a whole bunch of real estate that was worth this much, but now it's worth this much. Does that make sense? Here's the other challenge with where we're going. If, let's say you had ten million dollars and you applied ten million dollars to the market. See, I'm going to bring up that old chart that I had a minute ago. If you apply ten million dollars to where we are or where we were in two thousand and twenty, that ten million dollars would have gone up in value tremendously by whatever it bought. Unfortunately, if you apply that ten million dollars to where I think we're going to go to the bottom here somewhere, so somewhere in this space, I think this is what's heading uh toward us right here is I don't think real estate is going to do anything. I think we're just going to go sideways. And that's likely what euphoria bring for us unless, you know, the government goes out and says, we changed our mind about incentives. We're going to give the whole country another trillion dollars. Uh, show fans, if you know, the government could do that. We don't, we can't predict these guys. They could suddenly drop interest rates out of nowhere and they could just pummel another trillion dollars into the market. That's what caused this particular bubble. But if they don't and they start going sideways, it's going to look like this. So ten million dollars bought into real estate this year makes you five million dollars worth of uh fifty million dollars worth of total real estate assets. And over four, five, six, seven years, I believe those real estate assets will be worth exactly the same. Exactly the same. But the rents will be higher seven years from now. Who here would rather buy those buildings when the rents are significantly higher? When they're seven years worth hires. By the way, rent goes up on average five percent per year, five to seven percent per year. So over five years, you're talking about rents going up a decent amount of money. They're talking about minimum twenty-five percent. So if rent's a thousand dollars, I don't know where it's a thousand dollars anymore, Midwest. So when it rents two thousand dollars, it'll be three thousand dollars. Who can cover their mortgage a lot easier six, seven years from now? Absolutely. So why buy it today if it's not going to go up in equity? You're just going to pay the bills, have the stress. So the only reason you would buy it today is if you have a big chunk of money to move and you want a simpler portfolio that's easier to pass on to your family. Or you've got a big chunk of money to move into an asset that could cash flow more because you're able to leverage up more. Because it doesn't make sense to do the burst strategy unless you're doing a ten thirty-one exchange right now. And that is a challenge that large investors all across the country are facing and that's going to create an opportunity for you. And when I say that, I say going to create an opportunity for you in the future. But for right now, your future, it has to be created in your network. It has to be created in learning how to sell. Has to be created in learning how to market your services, building your business, serving and selling other people's things that drive traffic into yours. And what I said at the summit, and I'll talk about it again this year, is your marketing must pay you. You're marketing for your real estate business. You must get paid for it. Building a community and serving community members and being a community leader in a world of followers, please be a leader. World doesn't need more followers. The world needs more people going out and saying, hey, look, you know what? I talked to Walter and he said this return on equity thing is something you should look at. Or I talked to Kim Rodriguez, or I talked to Patrick, or I talked to Frank, and I said this, this return on equity thing is a thing you might consider looking at. Dave Mulvaney, you had a, I think, ten, fifteen million dollar company at one point. Like he's, he knows what it's like to lose money in business and he knows what it's like to be protected by real estate. And at the same time, we all know that real estate in in this, I mean, looking at the charts, it has times where it can go sideways. We saw it from two thousand eighteen until two thousand twenty, went completely straight sideways and then it shot up. But who here, I started the call with this. Who remembers two thousand eight? Where it just did the impossible, just out of nowhere, shot down, did the unthinkable, did the thing that nobody thought it would do. Right now, everybody thinks it's going to drop. It, they're not at the point, not at the point of, oh, it's, it's never going to drop. They're, they haven't gotten to denial yet. It may feel like you feel like as a savvy investor that it's there. But it is not there. And so we must make a decision. We must decide to not wait for the opportunity. That's sit on our hands. We have to go make money and build a network while the opportunity is rising, while the opportunity is being unfolded. If, and this is the question I'll put to you, the same question I asked Ron before COVID. What if the market doesn't drop for six years? What are you going to do? What if, what I'm saying is accurate. What if the market just goes sideways for the next six years? Real estate prices in twenty twenty-eight are the same that they were in twenty twenty-three, five years from now. What if it just goes sideways? What if it doesn't make sense to buy real estate for another six, seven years? In that case, are you not going to build wealth? Are you not going to get your financial freedom? You're just going to wait the six years, sit on the sidelines, do nothing? I don't think so. I'll tell you the same thing I asked Ron. Uh, I asked him in two thousand and nineteen when COVID hit. We were touring. I was about to tour the country. I was talking to all the bit, all the um landlord associations. I was going to tour the country, you know, talking about my book and sell mentorship and sell this real estate idea. And then COVID hit and everything went online, virtual. And I just told Ron, I was like, what if it never goes back? I'd feel like a fool if I hadn't figured out this virtual space. I feel like a fool if I hadn't figured out Zoom, if I hadn't go online, if I didn't like learn this. And he, he said the same thing everybody else said because Ron is my conservative guy who believes in, you know, consistency, which I love about him. He said, man, like, oh, don't worry, things will shake out, you know, two weeks, six weeks, three months, whatever, it'll get back to normal. But he liked the argument of what if, because worst case scenario, we got an online service. Cool. Two years later, we still couldn't do live events. So fans, you remember COVID, we learned a lesson. Ask the what if, and if the worst case scenario does occur, you want to be prepared for. And here's the, here's the thing. Worst case scenario, if we could go open events right away, I now had an online platform. It cost me almost nothing to shift from virtual. In fact, I saved a lot from switching to virtual from in person. I saved a ton of money. I don't have to pay for hotels anymore. Save me a ton of money, right? The hundred millionaire summit this year, the budget is already a hundred thousand dollars. Let's, by the way, give Dorina a big round of applause for a hundred thousand dollars. She, girl knows how to spend some money. She knows how to throw a party. But we're doing it for you. We're doing it because we are doing well. The community is doing well. The company itself is doing well and I see a lot of uh growth within each one of you and I want to make sure that this year we blow it out of the park. What we're going to be doing at the summit is building the business plan, building the million dollar business plan, having you sign the millionaire contract. We're going to bring you through three days of large multifamily investors. I'm going to bring Vinnie. Vinnie's going to talk about how to think big, how to scale. He's going to talk about what he's investing in in the market right now. And he's not going to talk about multifamily. He's going to be talking about what he's investing and where he's been at. If you've watched us on Thursdays, uh, we talk about abundance Thursdays, every Thursday with Vinnie. He comes in, he shares, he's doing residential assisted living, he's doing hospitality. And he's going to give a lot of excitement and bring, like, start the event with what is possible. Show hands if you love Vinnie Chopra. I love the idea of learning from a billionaire. Me too. He's an amazing guy. Oh, what like amazing mentor. So the summit is going to be intense. It's going to be work. So when your friends and family are like, oh, you're going on vacation to Florida, you're going to Orlando and you're like, it's business, it's work. They're not going to get it. It still is in Orlando and I'm going to suggest stay for Monday and Tuesday and go and do something in Disney because that's what they're thinking you're doing anyway. They're not going to understand the pictures of you in the room with guys on stage. Show of fans, if you understand, your friends don't get it. They'd have no clue what you're doing there. But what we're doing is we're working. We're building relationships. We're getting our minds right. We're building the business plan. I've got Brian Kent, who's actually on the call. He's going to be building the, the goal setting for you. So he's set goals. He's, he does transactions with government officials. Like his, his whole business is like literally entities and governments and doing huge monster transactions for his clients. And dude has helped his clients make billions of dollars. He'll be speaking on how to set realistic goals. So fans, that's cool. I told Brian, he's going on late. So by the way, the days are long. So sleep the week before because you will not be sleeping over the weekend. We're just going to get the work done. Because I only have a limited amount of time for me. There's always so long I take you away from your kids. There's always so long I take you away from some of your jobs and from your, your house and I want to get you out to Disney. So we're going to be doing a lot of work in a very short period of time. And no, it's not to make you tired, it's to make you successful. So if you're wondering, will there be a sale? I always sell the same thing every year. I'm going to sell Alchemist Mastery, but it'll be better than it was last year because we had some improvements that Dorina thinks and Stephen thinks and all the guys behind the scenes, Billy and Ron think will be even more juicy based on what's happening in the market now. Show fans, it's okay if I tweak our programs to be better. Thank you. So Bill Allen will be there. He'll be speaking about, uh, he's, he runs Flip Hackers Live. He'll be running his event live in California three weeks before. So Bill will be literally speaking on his event. He'll be speaking on Russell Brunson's stage for Click Funnels, Funnel Hackers. And then we do Flip Hackers, which is the real estate space for single-family flips. And then he's going to fly out three weeks later to Orlando. He's going to come and hang out with us. His net worth's over twenty million dollars. He's a huge influencer on social media, but he loves Alchemist Nation. So uh give yourselves a round of applause for being so lovable. For having the desire to grow, to help others. And when I told him our mission, he was like, dude, like, I love everything about this. Like, this is so cool. Like, this is a space I can donate time to. I can, I can be involved with. And when I asked him, I was like, what do you, what do you charge to speak? And he was like, for you? No, I'll do this. Like, I'll, I'll come and I'll speak for your community because of what you stand for, what you guys are doing. So if it wasn't for your desire to help others, you wouldn't be as easy to get really powerful speakers to our stage. So fans, if you understand, our commitment to serve is what attracts people who know how to serve. It makes us more desirable. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for your commitment and please, as we're going out there, focus on serving those who have money. I'm going to ask you to build communities of landlords. We're going to give you the tools at the summit. We're going to release the, the landlord associations. We may offer you opportunities in advance. We may bring in a few more people to the beta test. In fact, if you would be interested in running a landlord association, drop your email in the chat now. If you think it'd be valuable to run a landlord association in a city that's got a hundred thousand population nearby you. So drop that in the chat if you would be interested in volunteering for one of our events. That can lead to monster opportunities in the future. So I will make no promises, but if you do drop in the chat, I'll know that you were somebody who said, yeah, you know what? I'd be interested to be part of the beta test. I'd be interested in, in seeing where this leads and where this goes. So drop that in the chat, drop your email. Uh, Andrew, I believe is picking all those up. Actually, Jimmy, Jimmy Lorimer will pick all those up. Thanks, sir. Appreciate you, man. So all of those contacts, those are for like dropping your email and that's for somebody who says, yes, I'll volunteer or be interested in running a landlord association when they released or be part of the beta test. I want to open it up to questions. I talked about a lot today. Remember, we're not building housing on the moon today. That's twenty years from now. But we are offering the Alchemist Advantage for those who want to invest in, get this twelve percent return on investment. The other thing with the advantage is if you do invest with us, let me be very clear, this is not equity. This is not something, this is not a security of any kind. It is just a loan. It's just a term loan. It is done on a promissory note. We'll give your money back every six months or we'll auto renew if that's what you're interested in. But anybody who does invest in the Alchemist Advantage will be first right of refusal for equity when we do open up equity in Alchemist Nation. Which is something that is on our agenda to do because the only way for us to grow and really expand, take over three hundred cities is to eventually open the fund. Uh, for those of you who've run funds before, you know what I'm talking about. It does allow you a lot of capital. Uh, for those who have never done a fund before, but have watched us do South Coast Capital, the fund that we did there. It offered us an opportunity to expand and we just did it at the wrong time in the market. We should have, we should have had this built for that. And what we're building right now is to make sure that the next time we raise capital, we do a big fund, it's going to be something, we provide equity. It's something that we know is unstoppable, that we can deliver on regardless of what the market does. So it's building the operation company and the real estate investment company. Symbiotically in tandem, instead of what we were before, we were just an investment company. So fans, if you've made that mistake too, forgot that investment company also has an operation side. So those of you who are working your job, guess what? Your operations is your job. That is your operational company. It's kept the lights on, kept the bills, allowed you to keep doing the things that you do so that your family never suffers from your real estate career if it goes sideways or does something. But in order to scale, you do need to scale up your operational business. In order to scale, at some point, you will want to be continuing to buying real estate. And I want to be very clear. I've said we're not buying real estate. I didn't say we weren't putting offers in. We put over two hundred and forty offers this year. We are still actively aggressively. I get on the phone with my acquisitions team every single Friday. Uh, usually it's at this time, but today we did it at ten AM so that we could uh be convenient for everybody here on the call for each one of you. But Greg LeBlanc, Josh, um, they're sitting down literally every day making calls. They're calling lenders, they're calling uh people who own properties, they're calling other wholesalers and they are looking for deals, looking for opportunities. And we were aggressive in our search, but we're not going to buy garbage, right? We want something good and it's got a cash flow. So if you're out there and you're suffering and you're not buying things, don't worry, there are things to buy. Mitch Jorski has closed a number of properties this year. He has bought rental properties this year. I know the Rodriguezes bought properties this year. I know Dave Mulvaney's close, hasn't closed yet, but it's close. There are still deals happening and I've had deals that I've turned away because they were too small for me. Just not super interested in something with forty thousand equity on it or, you know, sixty thousand equity when I'm putting four hundred thousand into it. So fans, if you understand, I, the return on vest was just not there. It's some of these things have just been not exciting to me, but have worked for other investors. So there is still money out there, still opportunities. I know Brian Mazzilli closed a big deal two years ago, two years ago, Brian. So still operating that, still uh running it. If you do own property, evaluate, do the return on equity. Go take a look at it. See if the portfolio makes sense. So Ron and I, two years ago, three years ago, we had a hundred units. And we sold a lot. We sold a forty-eight in one shot. We had a rooming house, sold all of them. And then we shifted down and we've been selling this year. Right now we have, I think, twenty-five units. But by the end of this month, we'll have seventeen. Because we have a ten unit under agreement that was going to put another, I don't know, half a million dollars into the bank account of equity and pay down a lot of debt on some of the other condos that are left. So for me, I'm telling you ego-wise, it's a hard time. Man, I built my whole person owner around the real estate investor, on a guy who holds a bunch of real estate. But when I look at my cash flow wise and I look at the potential for Alchemist Nation and this uh this online business and these communities and the impact we're having. And I always look at like, I could always go and buy a ton of real estate with a hedge fund and a property manager. By the way, it helps to know I could always do the get rich quick scheme. Like, I could always go and just slam a bunch of real estate with a hedge fund and a property management company. It does help me sleep at night knowing I could always snap my finger and own a bunch of real estate with no money down. Like, I bought all of that real estate in the past. But I'm still a human being, just like the rest of you. And it's still, my ego is attached to what I own. So over the next few years, I may or may not own real estate and that will be very difficult for me. So, you know, be gentle. As I see you winning, trust me, I want you winning. If I see you buying real estate, trust me, I support you buying real estate. But it's just like I played, I played guitar, I played bass in the band. Whenever I go and I see a band live, I secretly want to be on that stage and it kills me that I'm not. So fans, if you know what I'm talking about. So every time you talk about a real estate deal, in my head I itch and I'm like, yeah, I want to do that too. Like, yeah, let's go. So I will absolutely support you buying. I'll absolutely encourage you and give you the guidance that I would do as if it was my own deal because I live vicariously through you in the moments where I'm not buying. But ultimately, we're doing it so that we can In the moments where I'm not buying, but ultimately, we're doing it so that we can build a very safe investment opportunity for all of us. A place, a way for all of us to go invest across this country. In cities like Tampa or Orlando or Denver where the opportunities rise because we have a community there. We have a team there. That to me is worth the next two years of us really going hard in building our network, building our technology, building our relationships. Because it creates an unstoppable opportunity that only happens when people think big and they think long-term. All the questions in a minute, but Jeff Bezos said. Everything they do at Amazon is three years in advance. They're talking about it now, three years in advance. Anything you see, they were talking about three years ago. And I had to start looking at Alchemist Station and saying, man, like, these guys are passing me. Some of these community members are like crushing it and I'm not staying ahead of where they're at. And that's why we're building the way we're building. Because some of you want to, you know, you're investing out of state. Joe fans, if you know, somebody in Alchemist Station is investing out of state now. Right? I know Brian did, right? And I know a bunch of you are, are investing out of state and that's one of the things that they're like, hey, do you have a community down there? It's like, dude, no, I don't. Do you have contacts on there? It's like, I don't, I don't have contacts in that city yet. And that to me is, it's really, it's really like, it bothers me that I haven't been able to get ahead of each of you. And that's not your fault, that's my fault. So fans, if you understand, you, you belong growing and continue to expand and pushing and I belong getting ahead. And bring the team large enough. That's why I brought Stephen on to operate uh as a CEO. That's why I brought Gary on, take a lot of the operations. And so that we can scale up and that's why I brought it on the, the sales team and the team builders and. All of the work we've done on the technology side, so. Yeah. We all go through not feeling good enough, not feeling we're doing enough. And in those moments where you feel like you're not doing enough, I want you to recognize something that I recognize also. You're probably fucking right. You're probably absolutely right. You're not doing enough. You can do more. If you are aware that you're capable of doing more, you should. Now, there's other people who will just be like, oh, you've done well. That's what family is for. I'm not here for that. I'm here to tell you, no, you're not doing enough. Just like I believe I'm not doing enough in Alchemist Station for Alchemist Station, which is why we're building these events, why we're building the technology. That's why we do the talks and we're doing talks like this and we're continuing to scale and help people buy real estate. And sell real estate. More importantly, right now, it's sell real estate. And acquire things using those, those funds, ten thirty-one exchange. So. Let's open up questions. By the way, for everybody who is still on, let's give you a big round of applause for hanging out with us for these past four years. Crushing it, helping others, building the hundred millionaires. Hundred millionaires inspired to build a hundred millionaires. One of the things I'm going to add this year. Is surround yourself with a hundred millionaires, serve a hundred millionaires. And build a hundred millionaires. Because at the end, you do have to have that contribution and I don't think that was giving away the secret to how I got here. I served millionaires before I started building millionaires. So hence that makes sense. I helped a lot of people get rich before I got rich. Awesome. And then before I started going out and paying it forward. So let's open it up to any questions on the market, on technology, on Alchemist Nation. By the way, yes, the map will be updated hopefully Tuesday, Wednesday. You'll see all the events across the country and you plan your vacations accordingly. So let's open up the questions. And if there are none, then you can always send a message on Alchemist Nation. Or send an email directly to events@alchemistnation.com, which is now managed by Andrew. In fact, let me give Andrew. One little um. Yeah, this is something I don't think anybody knows about. Andrew and Mitch are running the podcast now. So Alchemist Station Podcast coming back this week. Let's give them a big round of applause. And let's do it this way. Any questions, you can drop them into Alchemist Station in the main feed. And for each one of you, I bless you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you for your honesty. Thank you for your desire to drive and help others. I know it's sometimes embarrassing selling real estate because we said we'd always hold it forever. I know sometimes it's hard to not buy real estate. Because we said we're real estate investors and when the market doesn't deliver what you're looking for as a real estate investor, you know what a real estate investor does? We submit more offers. It's all we do. We keep putting offers in until the right thing happens for us. So let's give all of our sponsors a big round of applause. Everybody who's a team builder, everybody who's on the trusted team. Thank you so much for all your dedication to helping us build these millionaires. And for serving those who are already successful. Cheers to your success, your choice. Always work with the best. See you on the next call. Oh, by the way, tomorrow's Saturday. I'll see you Saturday morning.